Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting. We're going to call this meeting back to order at 6:38 PM. Today is September the 6th, 2022. I'd like to start by having our new board clerk, Kathleen, welcome. She's going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, may I have a motion, please, in a second, that we approve tonight's agenda as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Emily and second by Mark. All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, board members, and a second that we approve the consent agenda as listed?
So moved.
Motion by Catherine?
Second.
Second by Kristen. All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed. Thank you. We have no treasurer's report tonight, and we have a fun number of special reports. So I will turn it over to Dr. Putnam.
Thank you. Yeah, so for special reports this evening, we have a very exciting recognition of Penfield High School August graduates. And then we're going to turn it over to SEI Design Group, the district's architect, to walk through our Capitol Project update. And then we'll turn it over to our very own George English, our Director of Facilities, to talk about a summer facilities update. Really, all of the work that took place when summer was happening. And it's pretty amazing to see what we did internally. And so I'll start with asking Mrs. Watt to come up. And we have two slides. Come on up right there. Yeah, yeah. Because I want to read this first slide, but then I'll turn it over to you to introduce our student. That's fine. So just as a reminder, our goal, this district and our Board of Education has three major goals. And the first one here is each Penfield school will provide a safe, engaging learning environment promoting progress toward achievement, academic achievement, and excellence, as well as the development of the whole student. And I think it's important for the community to know that each year, Penfield High School students are able to graduate in June, in August, and in January. And tonight, we're honoring two August grads who may have made Penfield very proud. And we're so excited. We have Kayla Spahn and Neve Bach. Neve is unable to be here this evening, but Kayla Spahn is here. So if you could have some fun, and we'll ask the board and our district administrators, just like at graduation, if we could stand up in front here, we would like to officially, informally, award an August grad's diploma. Sound good? So just give us a minute to get there. And if you have any words to say, Ms. Watt, please do.
Come on up forward if you want.
All right.
And then I'll speak if that works.
Yeah.
So forgive me for having my back to you here, but I just want to make sure I can address the audience and family members. First of all, thank you to the Board of Education for having us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to formally and publicly acknowledge our August graduates. I think as adults, we all over time come to know that life has a way of presenting us with different obstacles and challenges that are more often than not very unexpected, sometimes way out of our control, and that take us down a different path that we maybe didn't quite anticipate at the start of the journey. And so I think any opportunity we have to acknowledge, especially when a young person is able to persist and persevere and fight through that and still get to the end game, that's what matters most. And so please know that everybody in this room is incredibly proud of you and knows that you are off to do amazing things, and we could not be happier for you. So thank you for being here tonight. Congratulations. Come on up. You want to sit right over here.
It's just one person. If you want us to stop, we can do another picture.
I can't stop it when we're at Frontier Field.
They all have these, like, proud badges.
That was fun. Okay. What do we have next? Oh, next is Capitol Project. I don't think they're going to top that. Hard act to follow.
So as we transition, we'll ask, I think we've got Vic Tommaselli from SEI to come on up and have some fun with us. Oh, they got the whole team. I apologize. So. So if you guys could just do me a favor and try to beat graduation, that'd be great. I noticed nobody you brought is wearing a T-shirt celebrating you, but. All right.
Well, thank you, Dr. Putnam. It is tough shoes to fill to follow graduation. And congratulations again to the graduate. I thought the family'd do more hooting and hollering since it was just one person, but anyway. To the board, thank you. We're always so pleased and happy to be here in front of you. We hope to do more of it. But we're here to talk a little bit about the current Capitol Project. I think everyone knows we have broken the project up into three phases. And a lot of it has to do with just the magnitude of the project, the timing of it, the aid and aidability. There are parts of the project that the SED maximum cost allowances come into effect down the road a little bit. So, you know, as a team, we ultimately decided to break it up into three phases. What we have tonight to present to you is the first phase, which is the transportation and buildings and grounds facility on the new property. And we have a short presentation. I just want to note two things. Steve Staveski from our office has been doing a lot of the heavy lifting. Steve couldn't be here tonight due to a conflict. He's up in the North Country and has more North Country meetings tomorrow morning. So Steve couldn't be here, but you got the B-team. But we have gone through, and we presented to the facilities committee, we went through a number of options through the design phase of the project in order to balance the scope, the program, and the budget. And we've ultimately gotten the project to a point where we've got everybody happy, I think, mostly happy. And it's taken some doing, but working with campus on budget issues and, you know, making modifications to the plans and materials and square footages and whatnot. We've gotten the project to a point where we're moving forward. So I'll just, if we can advance a little bit, walk through some slides.
You've got a clicker right there.
Oh, sorry. Now you want me to know how to do this, huh?
You got it.
All right. So the first slide just shows an overlay of the site development on an aerial photograph of the area. We've got Jackson Road and Plank Road. It's on that corner, sort of. I think a couple of things to note. We have sighted the building so that it provides a screen for the bus parking. As you can see, the building is set back quite a ways from the road. And there's a considerable amount of green space, grass, trees, plantings, maybe some earth berm in front to help, you know, shield the building a little bit, shield the parking. And again, the building is set back. It's long and linear, and it does provide a shield for, a visual shield for all of the bus parking, which happens behind it. We didn't show the aerial photograph with enough of the properties across the street from the entrances. But again, it was something that we heard, I think even during pre-referendum time or at the time of vote, that there were some neighbors concerned with headlights from the buses coming in and out and being directly opposite their homes. So we did adjust the drives, the curb cuts into the facility. The curb cut on the right is an in-only, it's one direction, one-way, in-only. And then the other is both in and out. So you note that visitors and B&amp;G folks and whatnot can come in, park in the lot in front. Buses can come in that way, drive around the side and then into the back of, in the bus parking area, either going through the wash, the bus wash first, or just going into the parking area. We've had to incorporate stormwater management systems. So we have some retention ponds on the site. Again, on the left side of the plan and on the top of the plan, we've identified some areas that are going to be collecting areas for stormwater. It's a requirement that, you know, we don't just dump all of stormwater directly into the storm system. It has to be mitigated and controlled. The area all the way to the top and right is where the fueling station is. So there will be pumps, gas pumps, fuel island, and whatnot along there. And the other thing important to note is that the buses primarily will exit out onto Plank Road. They'll be coming in, parking overnight, or going through the bus wash. And then when they exit, most of the buses will be exiting out onto Plank Road. We also heard some concerns about exterior lighting and making sure that we're good neighbors to the neighborhood and whatnot and not having glaring lights. We're going to, we've designed parking lot lights and, you know, the bus parking lighting areas so that they're either, you know, focused away from the streets, or they are, they call them low cutoff fixtures, where they have a very identifiable light umbrella, I guess. So it doesn't spill, there's not a lot of light spill. But it will light the lots from a safety and security standpoint without being obnoxious or obtrusive to neighbors. Couple of facts, I guess. There are 91 bus parking spaces on this site, 182 car spaces. We are working, we have worked with the town and with the developer. They are running a new storm sewer, a new waste sewer system. We're tying into it. I think at the time of vote, we weren't sure if we were going to be doing a septic system or something else. But we are tying into municipal waste system. And then, again, I mentioned it before, the front of the building, we did set it back quite a bit on the site. And we do have, you know, quite a lot of green space in front with plantings to help shield and give some buffer to the neighbors and neighborhood. We have some images later on in the presentation that'll help show that a little better. Just a, these are kind of a blow up of, let me go back for a second. So if you look at the long linear building in yellow, and then there's a little slice of yellow building on the other side of it, the slice of yellow building on the other side of it is grounds building. We sort of created a courtyard, if you will, an open-from-both-end courtyard in between the two buildings where staff, B&amp;G folks, drivers, whatever, can, we'll put some tables out there. They can have lunch, they can grill, they can do whatever, you know, create a little soft area between the two buildings. So that just shows a blow up of that area. Really hard to see, but we, again, worked with George and the transportation folks and worked a lot on program, making sure that we got the building program satisfied to meet both groups. There are considerable, you know, spaces for driver waiting, driver training. And we've added, we added some second floor space because of the volume, the height of the building necessary for the bus, you know, the bus maintenance bays. It's a very tall, you know, requires a very tall space. And we were able to utilize that volume in what we're calling the office space, you know, and it's sort of part in the middle there, where we can have two stories there. And it helped reduce the footprint on the site and the efficiency of the building and also accommodate program. So again, it's really hard to see and small. But the area all the way to the left, obviously, is the bus maintenance bays. We have lifts, we have part storage, we have an office for the head mechanic. We've got some toilet rooms. The center area of the plan, again, is sort of the shared. There's office space for the transportation folks, but also shared facility for both. And then over on the right is the grounds, kind of the grounds area. Second floor, as you can see, that center area is over the lower, the first floor, mostly office space. So we have a very large conference room, training room up on the second floor. It can be used for a variety of district functions. I don't remember the number of people it can accommodate, but it's pretty significant. It's a pretty large space. And then some other offices up there as well. George's and the Buildings and Grounds offices are up there. The area to the far right, again, because of the volume, those two little rectangles over on the right are mezzanine spaces. So that one is a mechanical space, the other is open mezzanine for additional storage. And same in the bus bay, in the bus maintenance bay. The three spaces down at the bottom of the page, the two on either end are open mezzanine space to the bus maintenance, or the bus maintenance area proper. The center area is a mechanical space. So mechanical equipment will be shielded, it'll be indoors, easier to maintain. George is happy, his folks are happy that we're not putting equipment outside. And we've basically created a very functional, functional building for the site. This is that little separate maintenance storage building that, again, is, was all the way over to the right on the site plan. Just storage and parts and whatnot. So outside, we tried to break up the, you know, the long linear feel of the building. It is a considerable building. And massing-wise, we wanted to break it up a little bit to help not make it look so, you know, monotonous or whatnot. So we do have where the entries are. We've sort of cut the building and put a flat roof in to help, again, break up the, break up the overall massing of the building. We're using materials that are, you know, the colors are going to be more organic and more natural to the area. We're trying to make it, it's not residential, but it's, you know, it's kind of fitting in more of a residential or almost, we had a plan at one point that was more farm-like, you know, with individual-type buildings. But we're trying to, again, keep the massing of the building down proportions so that it's more palatable and the material is more natural to the environment. Similar view just from the one corner, looking back the other way. The backside of the building, where the bus parking is on the lower part of the building, all that asphalt pavement. The bus maintenance bays all the way over to the right, B&amp;G bays on the left side and that center shared area in the middle. It's the blow up of the main entry. Kind of a dark image of the building, but again, just a perspective view, sort of closer out to the road and give you a feel for, you know, the setback of the building. It's not encroaching by any means on the street or on the neighbors. It is set back. And then that area in front, again, is all green space planted, perhaps some berms, again, to help, you know, shield lights and the visibility of the building. I'm going to turn it over to Gianna, and if you could read those numbers, more power to you.
I have my own copy. Hi, everybody. Good evening, everybody. My name is Gianna. I'm with Campus Construction, here to present the updated budget for the project. So Phase One, we came to a number of roughly $860,000 over our original conceptual budget. We also have budget of, for the 1.39, I'm sorry. We are 1.393 over for any of our bus charging stations. So it's important to note that a lot of this stuff was based on some assumptions that we made. We feel that this number definitely could change in the future. Just to give you an example, we based it on a 4,000 amp service, 22 bus chargers, and then you can charge two buses on each charger, so that'll be 44 buses total. So there's definitely considerations that could be made, you know, going through our design.
I think, you know, Gianna indicated we're, you know, the current budget is over budget. But we have contingencies built into all the numbers currently. And I think both campus and SEI are very comfortable, and I think the district is comfortable with where we are in the overall budget as of today. Schedule-wise, we're submitting documents to the State Education Department for approval this month. We're hoping for, well, we're planning on, late winter approval, probably January, February or so. January, if we're lucky, and bidding the project in the spring. I don't know how close you've been watching construction and construction prices, but things have been a little squarely the last few years. They seem to be settling out a little bit, but we're just not sure. So as a result of that, campus very smartly has built in some contingencies. So again, we're comfortable with the over budget.
A lot of that was based on the current market conditions. So obviously, there's a chance that it's going to improve in the future. And we're also planning on doing another estimate on the drawings once we submit to SED. So there's another opportunity for us to get a good feel for where we are dollar-wise.
And I think the electric charging stations were never part of the original project. So something that's come up, and it's obviously a real concern and a real need for all districts in the future. So administration asked us to look at it, figure out, you know, what needs to be done and put a number on it. And I think funding sources for that are still being evaluated. Put the pressure on Dan for that one.
So a lot of the groundwork for the electric buses is going to be done in this project. So in the future, if we want to add on or more chargers, or different types of chargers, you're able to do that without, you know, ripping up any of the underground conduit, things like that.
I don't know, the next slide is just a continuation.
Okay, yeah. That's pretty much it.
We, as I mentioned in the beginning, the three phases, they're sort of linear in how we're going about the design process. We're finishing this one up, submitting it to the state. Then we're going to be starting the Phase Two design work and, you know, working with the district, working with administration, with, working with the schools and stakeholders. And we'll be developing, you know, again, more plans, more budgets, and more presentations to you guys as time goes on. But they're basically about a year apart, I think, in terms of design start, design finish, construction start. So the plan is for Phase One to begin next spring, summer. Phase Two, the following year, and Phase Three, the year after that.
Great. Thank you so much. Before, just before I open for comments and questions for Gianna and Vic, a couple of things. In facilities, we did have a conversation about the electric charging stations, and there could be some funding options. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. The other pieces, when we talk about being over budget, especially for new board members, like, we're never over budget because when we bring a project to vote, we have to be at that number or below. So this'll work, it all works itself out. This is preliminary, so I just didn't want anyone to go, "Oh, we're over budget." Because that always freaks me out at my house when my husband goes, "We're over budget." And I was like, "Ah, stop shopping." So that's not really what this means. Because this is in three phases, they will be bidding, there's contingency pieces built in so that, you know, and Dan can probably explain this way better than I can. But I just wanted to say that in case anyone was flipping out about over budget. But then I'm going to open up questions, comments for our team here tonight. Mark?
I just want to thank you both, you know, being on the facility committee. It's clear how well you two work together and, or you two companies work together, and how much you've taken into account the community feedback, like I said, the driveway alignment, the look of the building, and the lighting. And then on top of that, which you touched on at the end, which was the building for the future infrastructure of electric buses. You know, now, as that comes along, we don't have to spend extra money kind of redoing things. That'll be built in. Now, the hardware, like the charging stations, may not come all at once. But as we add buses, that'll come, but the infrastructure's in place. So, and I think you've done a great job with that. I do also want to point out, I just, you said one thing that just caught my ear. We talked about, you know, about approximately 90 bus spaces and 181 car spaces. And the first thing that comes to mind is, well, why is that? But this is, you know, you've got bus drivers, but this is not just a bus facility. It's also for buildings and grounds. So you've got buildings and grounds employees, and you have their equipment and vehicles that take up spaces too. So in case people want to write, adding so many car spaces, it's not just for bus drivers. And I just wanted to point that out.
Correct.
Can I add there too, which Vic mentioned? The, there'll be space there, conference space. So the idea would be right now, for an example, trying to get all of our bus drivers together to do a training. We can't do it at our current location. So we have to either come to the auditorium, and that means driving over to the auditorium, or sometimes in the summer, we've rented out Harris Whalen Park or worked with the town to use Harris Whalen Park. So having that facility be able to house enough people to do all of the trainings there, it also opens a door for down the road of doing other district trainings there. So if we were to do, you know, a BOSI's training or a multi-district training for something, we would need additional parking beyond the employees who go there to park for visitors and guests to come, to come into the, to the location for a training, whatever that might be. So it really does, as we know, you know, location in real estate is hard to find, including trying to find a space to put lots of teachers together or community members to have a meeting. So that location could do that for us as well.
Just, Lisa, thank you again for clarifying the over budget thing because you're right. We will not be over budget. You know, the voters authorize a certain amount of money, and it won't be overspent. In addition to, I just want to note, in addition to the contingencies that are built in, we're going to start talking about alternates that we might be able going to start talking about alternates that we might be able to identify. So, on bid day, if things do come in either lower than or higher than expected, we can either add to or take away. Things that don't change the overall program, still give you the facility you want and need to meet program, but there might be some, again, either savings, or you might be able to, you know, buy a little bit more, depending on how the numbers come in. So, we're always very conscious of balancing the scope and the budget and making sure that we're not in front of you saying we're in trouble because we don't want that, and you know you don't want that.
Thank you. You got another question?
It was just a comment onto Tom's point about the conference, you know, holding training there at the new facility. You know, one of, one big advantage would be in the auditorium, if you need to write something down, you have to use your lap. You know, in a conference room, you'll have the tables and you can spread out a little bit. So, what we have is working to the best of its ability, but it's going to be so much nicer and more efficient.
I think, you know, one of the pieces I think about is that when we have these presentations, it's a reminder that we have meetings, district officials, along with George English and our financiers and Campus and SEI, like, on every other week, you know, to look at and fine-tune. And then Facilities Committee meets as a board committee to do updates every couple of months. And then you also reference, like, the user group meeting. So, we go to the folks who are going to be most impacted, our drivers, our B&amp;G folks, so they can also take a look at it. It's not being done in a vacuum and then saying, "This is what you have to live with." And in the same token, continued conversations with community and our updates here, and then folks who reach out and have questions, we're always happy to answer. As we get in further this project, we keep folks updated, obviously have board meetings also on our webpage and keep information there. I haven't seen a Capitol project get voted on, and everything in that Capitol project is exactly how it is when the ribbon-cutting happens. And we dealt with this with our classroom spaces that we added here at the high school many years ago, when we added the auditorium and redid the auditorium. That was going to be so large, we could put the entire school in it. That was not cost-effective, and it ended up being, you know, still something that we can use, we can get two grade levels at a time. But those things happen, and, you know, my piece is, it's obviously millions of dollars because we're a district with, you know, 1,000 employees in a lot of places. But this B&amp;G facility was built in the early 1960s and really has not been renovated or touched since then. So, I also look at the investment in at least the next 100 years of where we're going to be for transportation and B&amp;G. And I really appreciate the work and the thought through the user groups to add some of those outdoor spaces. I do, I think of our drivers who are on a bus, you know, all day, driving, and, you know, if, for many of us, then probably being outside on the rare nice day we get in upstate New York, as opposed to having to sit in your car, sitting, sitting in the very small space we have now. So, I think it will be great. We've got years to go before we can, we say we're done, but lots of conversations and continuing fine-tuning, and both Bill Maloney and Dr. Driffl, and the teams have been incredible on trying to dig in and see what we can do. And the electric parking spots, just as that piece is, when we built our stadium here, if we remember, when we built the stadium, we did not have lights on our turf field. But we did put the conduit in for if we wanted to put lights up. And then several years later, the board at that time voted on lights, and we didn't have to rip up a turf field to put lights up because it was sort of planned for what could happen in the future. So, I like that very planful thought to make sure that we're there. And as New York State is, you know, continuing to look at electric buses, and, you know, that could change, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but we'll be set up to be prepared to do whatever we need to do if it's a requirement from New York. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. That is wonderful.
Very welcome. Thank you again. Our pleasure to be here, and we look forward to giving you further updates in the future.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. And you think we're done, but we're not. We have one more special report.
It's a special report kind of day.
Yep, and I've got, it's not working for me, but I've got George English, if he can join us, our Director of Facilities. Yours is also not working.
Maybe George's will work. Uh-oh, no. Oh, woo-hoo!
You're good.
That's because you're the director. Of all, of all the things.
Everyone, thank you for having me. Most of us think of school and think of summertime and think we get a break for our Facilities Department, that's when we really put it in high gear. And so, I do appreciate having the opportunity to kind of share the things that we've gone through this past summer, to, you know, with a focus on trying to make things better for our students and staff. I usually start each, you know, about January timeframe, meeting with principals, meeting with head custodians, going through work orders that we can't get to during the normal year, and start prioritizing, you know, what can we do this summer? And what can we do with internal staff, and what will I have to contract out because we just don't have the resources or the expertise to do that? And I should also include that I meet with the Food Service Director, I meet with our Transportation Director, and of course, the Athletic Director. She's really tough. She has a laundry list, but she's awesome to work with. I just like giving her a hard time. So, tonight, I just want to talk about some of those summer projects, and then also give a quick update on our facilities, our buildings and ground staffing. So, the high school did get a lot of attention from our staff this summer. We did redo the student parking lot, we had to seal that and stripe it, and at the high school principal's request, we also numbered it this year, which we haven't done in the past. And that's to just help them be able to track students coming and going a little better and help keep track of things. So, that's a good thing. We also installed four electric vehicle charging stations at the high school. Dr. Driffl was very instrumental in that as well. We installed some fencing for secure storage under the stadium bleachers. Again, our Athletic Director hit me hard, but, but that's also really awesome for storage, but it's also good in that we are keeping students during athletic events from hiding under there. It's a tough spot to track students, so that's good in two ways. We spent some time and money pressure washing our stadium, press box, things were collecting some mold and just looking a little, now we look like first class again. So, that was awesome. We did have to bid tennis courts, crack repair, and repainting. We went with the U.S. Open theme this time. If you haven't seen it, it looks amazing. I think it's, I'm really happy with that. The nurses' office, we did some renovations, mainly to improve privacy of the space. We did some renovations upstairs, and our partner's campus used to have that space, they were gracious and gave it up, and we now have a new tutoring center upstairs in the high school. And D7 is a shared services area, we did some renovations there, carpeting, painting. We are in the midst of a sound system in the east gym, we didn't quite get that finished, but it's in progress. And then we painted an assistant principal's office. So, I do have a few photos to show you, that's our new student parking lot, senior parking lot. Looks beautiful. It's amazing how much it costs to make it look black and pretty. Oh, my goodness. But it's important, and it looks amazing. Here's our four EV charging stations, they're in what we call the north lot. We actually had, I was able to capture a vehicle being charged, so I've seen it more than once being used, so it's fantastic. There's our new tennis courts.
Nice.
Beautiful. Looks amazing. That's my favorite theme. I know it's not red, I do have trouble with that, but it's still awesome. So, the picture on your left is where students and visitors would go into the nurses' office. It looks a little rough because we were in the middle of work, but you can see the beds through that doorway. There was no privacy, it was just not a great setup. And so, on the right is the new door, and I did the best I could to try to even get a view in there. You can't, you won't be able to see. So, the door on the left is going to be closed now with the blind down, and so now we have a much more private setup, and we don't have people walking by and gawking in, and it's just way better. We also added an office in the back corner for the nurse, so they have a private spot for, you know, meetings, and it's not overheard by everybody. This is the new tutoring center upstairs. We added a wall, I didn't give you a picture of that, but, yes, I did, I'm sorry. On the left, the wall, to the right, that's the door in the back of that picture, we added that to close off that hallway and make that tutoring space. This is the new special services suite, we carpeted this area, we painted this area, just totally refreshed it. So, that, those are some of the highlights. For the high school, Bay Trail, the big, big thing there was we totally refurbished the gym, meaning we didn't just sand it once and then reseal it. We took it right down to bare wood, then you put finish on it, then you repaint it, and then you seal it. So, that was not done by our staff, that's something that I contracted out. We did change the computer lab, converted it into a new academic support center, which we did all of that internally. We renovated the Food Service Director's office, again, we did all of that internally. Remodeled our receiving area to kind of prep that and prepare it for some of the Capitol Project work that's being more outside of that. And then added a doorway and an upstairs bathroom, which also has a janitor's closet in it. So, we've had a janitor custodian get caught in the bathroom when a lady went into the ladies' room. It's just, it was a crazy setup, so we fixed that problem. But there's the new gym for, at Bay Trail, the floor. Obviously, it's not all-new gym, but the floor, it looks absolutely gorgeous. So, we're very pleased with the results of that. That's the new academic support center that used to be our computer lab, and so that came out really, really nice. That's the new food service, well, it's not new, but it renovated office. And then that's the receiving area, which we added the dark brown doorway, and that closes off the kitchen, so when the receiving doors are open, you're not in December or January, all the wind, it was just really, really bad setup, so much improved. And then, this is fairly simple, but we took some of these curtains out of the nurses' office at the high school and repurposed them here in the football team room. You see the kind of locker sort of along the left side and the left picture, and they're, the football players are out there changing, and there was just no privacy. Because that overhead garage door is open because it's just how it works there. And so, now we have a curtain that can be drawn, and there's some privacy, so I thought that was a nice improvement. We are also getting some new lockers to add in here so the football players' helmets and shoulder pads can be secured. But we can pull the curtain back and still pull in the gator, we can pull in the watering station, so. Scribner, we added some screens to the F hallway and put some blinds in the F hallway, all focused around trying to control the temperature, because we've had complaints last spring, especially with those classrooms being very warm, so. Indian Landing milled and repaved the basketball court, replaced stair treads in two of the four stairwells. One of them was already completed, so we matched what was existing. And then we removed a dead tree from the property line so it didn't fall on the fence and neighbor's property. But so, that's the new basketball court, looks beautiful. The stair treads on the right, or I'm sorry, on your left, are what they used to look like, now on the, on the right is the new. Cobble's, we painted the cafeteria, did some masonry repairs, paved behind the building to connect the sidewalks, and also improved access for our emergency, any kind of emergency situations. We eliminated a doorway in the principal's office and painted her office, and we refinished the gym, which we did that internally. So, we sanded just the top layer and then put a layer of sealer back on top. And so, the masonry work was really critical, in my opinion, at Cobble's. It was, you know, salt, it's a salt problem, you know, we have to salt, we have to over-salt to, for reliability reasons. And that eats away at concrete, it eats away at the mortar. And so, we used a Proco product, and it actually looks like it was always there and always was like that. So, I was really pleased with how that came out, especially around the main entrance of Cobble's. That's the new emergency access pathway around the backside of Cobble's. And then at Harris Hill, we installed a new Gaga pit. That's, I'd never get over, that's a weird name. The kids absolutely love that.
They love it.
It is unbelievably awesome. We refurbished the outside amphitheater, painted the main entrance mullions, again, that was a salt issue with some rusting, but, and we replaced the carpet on the stage steps and a little bit of masonry repair at Harris Hill as well. And so, that's the new Gaga pit, I mean, new amphitheater, it's refurbished. We actually put concrete in that, that's going to be there forever. So, that was a big improvement there, and there's the new Gaga pit, which our grounds staff put together. And we put artificial turf under it because it's, you know, if you don't put something there, you're going to have dirt. And then that's tracked in the school, but if you put it on a paved area, then you have scraped knuckles, so.
They're called Gaga knuckles.
Yeah. So, this is the best solution, so.
It's a whole thing.
So, those were the, you know, the highlights of the things we were able to accomplish this summer. From a staffing standpoint, John Toms took over as our labor foreman in July and inherited two experienced maintenance mechanics, that's all we had on staff. Vasily and Troy are absolutely awesome. They did, they built the walls in the nurses' office, built the wall for the tutoring center. They helped with the building of the wall and finishing the wall and putting the doors in for the receiving in Bay Trail Kitchen, and they did all that starting the 15th of July because they had the first two weeks of July off. So, they were amazing. Then on top of that, they also had a couple of our new maintenance mechanics that we were fortunately able to hire. They were training them at the same time, so it was an excellent summer. I am so thankful for those three guys. We were able to also hire a painter. He started the 1st of July, and he, I mean, I can't believe how much paint. He actually told me how many gallons, and I'm drawing a blank, but he has put a lot of paint on the walls this summer for us, so I'm very grateful for the work that he's done. So, I had a typo on there and somebody fixed it. It said, "Hug, thank you for facilities." I do like to hug, but I'd like to hug all of my staff. And, you know, I've highlighted, you know, a lot of the things that are extraordinary project kind of related, but I need to also highlight all of our custodial staff, which they are the shortest right now as far as vacancies are concerned. But our buildings are ready, they look wonderful, they work hard all summer long, so I really appreciate them as well. And I am very grateful for our new contract because we are able, we are starting to get better from a staffing standpoint. We had four interviews last week for cleaner vacancies. I had a young lady call today, so that's a fifth. So, I haven't seen her application yet, but I'm pretty sure we're going to get one, so I'm thankful for the new contract and just thankful for our team and thankful for what we're able to get done this summer. So, thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you. Board members, questions for George?
Oh, yeah, I did have a question. The numbered parking spots.
Yes.
Is there a purpose for that other than, I, I would think it would be so you could identify where a student parks, or anybody were to park, you know, and to remember where a visitor parked. But are those assigned to students, or?
They're going to be, yes. And I assume at this point, yes, they, they, they have been.
Okay. Thank you.
Last year, there was a problem with parking abilities, and I might help them figure out who needs help.
Our, our student parking lot, and it is a conversation that all high school principals have, having been a high school principal, when the Monroe County principals get together, the student parking lot is always a little bumpy, because it's new drivers. Now, I'll be honest, I have seen probably just as many little bumps in the staff parking lot. But students in parking and trying to get in and out of there has been tough. So the, the numbers will, will help. And honestly, cleaning it up and making it look good is also helpful. This is where seniors in the past two years during COVID, we started and allowed them to paint their parking space. But as Mr. English said, it's very expensive to repave that every year. And so seniors aren't parking, aren't painting a parking spot this year, because it's awesome, but you don't want to park in somebody else's painted parking spot when you're a senior. So we're getting back to all of the more traditional, typical senior celebrations. Because remember, our seniors the last two years couldn't do lots of things. One year, they couldn't go to a ball. They didn't have a bash, like because of COVID. So some things that are really fun, like painting your space, is actually a huge cost, which is why that sort of goes away, now that we're getting back into the, the non-COVID school year. I just want to mention that, that when I listen to this, George, and everything you guys do, it's, it's this piece of like upkeep of facilities, you know? As a homeowner, you look around, and if you let things go, the next thing you know, you wake up, and, you know, maybe you're being yelled at because you let something go for a long time. But it's that annual projects and doing much of this internally with our staff, who are just so well-trained and so incredible. And then I think back, and I remember where, but somewhere in college, learning about like the broken window syndrome, where like if there's a, a place with lots of broken windows, people are more apt to throw a rock and break a window. And so as we keep our facilities, you know, top notch and looking good, it also shows our students, our staff, and guests that come in, we care about this place, and, and we take care of it. And I'm always amazed, walking through the buildings, right now, they're like pristine, because we don't have kids here yet. They're beautiful. In a little while, they'll be scuffed up. But the one thing in Penfield I've always just been so proud of is, is there's not garbage everywhere. Like our custodial teams and our facilities teams are great, but because it looks nice, our students and our staff take care of it, too. And so that's just this huge piece, that, that doing these projects over the summer makes sure that we don't all of a sudden look around and say, wow, these facilities have fallen apart, and it costs even more to fix them, because of the ongoing upkeep. So I, I just think it looks, it looks incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. It's great. It always amazes me how much you guys get done. So I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So that concludes special reports.
That's lovely. Guess who's here today?
Lila's here.
Hi, everyone. So just a couple of updates. So obviously, tomorrow's our first day of school for everyone. And then we also have homecoming, which is coming up in a couple of weeks, from September 19th to the 24th. So this is a really fun week for all students with different dress-up days. It kind of turns into a fun competition here at the high school. So moving into just some PHS updates, we have our fall sports that are now in full swing, including a home varsity girls soccer game tonight and an away field hockey game. Our varsity football team beat Edison 32 to 0 in the season opener. So that was really exciting. The cross-country team hosted their annual 24-hour marathon, which serves to benefit Galisano. And combined, these athletes completed over 1,000 miles, which is just really impressive. So again, we had our freshman and new student orientation today, led by sources of strength peer leaders. And these activities feature getting-to-know-you sessions, PHS need-to-know facts, a guided tour, and the opportunity for these new students to walk their own schedules. The 2023 class council has been working on our senior mural, which is located by the commons, and it looks amazing. And I've seen these students working on it. It just, it's amazing. They've been coming in all summer, just planning it out and working on it. So just a shout out to them. And then lastly, this Friday is also our senior sunrise, which, which will include fun games and a light breakfast for the class of 2023. And again, these seniors will also be featured on WHAM Channel 13. At Bay Trail, they had their locker setup night tonight, which allowed students to walk their schedules, set up their lockers, and meet their classmates. And also, the PTA provided food trucks. At the end of August, Bay Trail had its sixth grade and new student orientation, which was led by caring community ambassadors, which are exemplar eighth graders. And at the elementary schools, the, at Scribner, there was the annual kindergarten kickoff, which allowed for kids to meet their classmates. At Indian Landing, over the past couple of weeks, kindergarteners received special welcome gifts at their front doors from Indian Landing. Lastly, Harris Hill, kindergarteners also participated in the bus safety session a couple of weeks ago to prepare for school starting. And at Cobble's, like the other elementary schools, today was supply drop-off day. So students were able to see their classrooms, see their desk, and meet their teacher and classmates. So that's pretty much it.
Awesome. Thank you. Questions, board members, for Lila?
I'd actually love to hear more about your mural. Like, who gets to, like, does everybody come? How does that work? That sounds fun.
So I'm on our class council as well. So at the end of June, we all kind of brainstormed what we wanted our mural to look like. And a common theme is that we wanted ours to be a little bit different than the other ones. A lot of, because it started in 2020, so red and black were common themes, of course, our colors with, you know, the Patriots. But we wanted something different. So we kind of went for a silhouette of the building in, and then kind of a sunset theme with names written on the sunset, kind of in corresponding colors. And then we incorporated the 2023 into the building. And so I think they're finishing up either this week or next week.
A lot of names.
Oh, that sounds awesome.
375 names.
That's great. Awesome. Thank you. Welcome back. We missed you this summer. It was a little boring, you know, without having a fun, I mean, sorry. Dr. Button did a great job, but it's, you know, it's much more fun when you're here.
It's more fun when you can
Right. Speaking of that, now it's your turn.
Oh, great. All right. Superintendent reports. I just have a couple student-staff honors, a two-slide update, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates. So we held new faculty orientation. District held its annual new faculty orientation during the week of August 22nd. And all of our newest faculty members spent several days learning and getting to know each other, learning about Penfield, and getting into the nuts and bolts of, of what they need to do. And we're really excited to welcome them all to Team Penfield. Put Dr. Kenny completely on the spot. Do you remember a rough estimate of how many new faculty members we have?
We were at 42.
Forty-two.
We're still looking.
And we're still hiring. So look on the webpage. But a pretty large group, and, and Tasha Potter, and Leslie Maloney, Dr. Kenny, our directors, Kevin Marriott, who is our assistant director for professional learning, and, and many other people, I forget, really worked with our folks and got them prepared and, and geared up. So great, great times. Project Welcome, Bay Trail students, Juliana, Molly, and Natalie are also members of Girl Scout Troop 6812. And they planned and coordinated a project welcome campaign for this year's incoming sixth graders as part of their Silver Award project. And the Silver Award project is, is the equivalent of an Eagle Scout, in Scouts. It's like the highest honor. So they made welcome signs for each house and placed inspirational signs. They created an every new student's locker, 375 lockers. They also created a handbook so that this project can be carried on by seventh graders each year. Just a great job. It looks really cool over at Bay Trail. And again, just a, just a nice partnership with some students, but also with Girl Scout Troop 6812. Outstanding Best Buddies Award, this just in, and congratulations to Scribner Road Elementary School on winning the New York State Best Buddies Outstanding Elementary School Chapter of the Year Award for 2022. Chapter is coordinated by teachers Stephanie Zanowski and Julie Flynn. And just way to go. Best Buddies came into our school district a while back, starting at the high school, and now has started branched out to other schools. And it's a wonderful club that supports students with disabilities and general education students, really working together hand-in-hand to try to support relationships and positivity. They do some great things, and just really cool to be honored, because this is not just a state organization, it's national, but to be connected here is great. And they're partnered with the Galisano Institute, and, and so that, again, that partnership is wonderful. And then NISMA All-State Conference, congratulations to our students listed here who've been selected as participants and alternates for the annual NISMA All-State Conference in Rochester. Very excited. And just again, shows the music work that we do here in Penfield, and our support and love of our music program, and of course, our students and their talent. So I have two quick updates. The first is that tomorrow is indeed the first day for students. And just a thank you to all the members of Team Penfield who worked all summer, as Mr. English mentioned, to ensure that our district would be ready to welcome students back. So many times in the summer, it's, you know, kids are off, so it feels like schools must not be doing anything. It's a lot of work. Both our Board of Education, who met through the summer, had workshops through the summer, helped guide us in our vision and mission and where we're going. District Office team, those here and those at district office, transportation, buildings and grounds, food service, building administration, nurses, school counselors, social workers, and psychologists, faculty and staff, everybody had their hand in getting us ready, whether it was curriculum work or planning, to make sure that we are ready to get kids back tomorrow. So we're very excited to have our students back, and it should be a great start to the school year. And then we said hello in the very beginning of the meeting, but an official public welcome to Mrs. Astro. Mrs. Kathleen's Astro has joined the Team Penfield as our new district and board clerk. So if you recall, our last meeting, we said goodbye to Sharon Irkfits in her retirement, but she's back again for one more meeting, just to help Kathleen get, get her sea legs of a board meeting. And so just wanted to welcome Ms. Astro and joining Team Penfield, and we're very excited to have her, and you'll see her at every meeting. Want to, want to do a round of applause for Kathleen? And then, I only have two slides, but do you have any questions for me?
Questions about tomorrow being the first day of school? Does anyone have a question?
No, I, you know, I wanted to comment on that Project Welcome, because I, I think that's just a wonderful thing, and very labor-intensive for, you know, for a welcoming project. I'm very impressed, and I think it's a lovely thing, and I'm really glad you, that was highlighted tonight.
Absolutely. It's a great partnership we have with both the Scouts and the Girl Scouts and the work we try to do. Many times, both Silver Award projects and Eagle Scout projects, we work through, because many times they're great ideas, but then when they leave, it becomes George English's issue. Like, many times when you're like, we want to plant trees, or we want to do this, or we want to do flowers, which is great, but then they move on, and facilities and grounds has to take care of it. So we work through when organizations come forward about ideas, to make sure that they're, you know, obviously budget-neutral to us, but then also not intensive work after. So something like this is perfect, because the students did all the work. It was a great opportunity, but then they leave us with a book for future classes if they want to continue it, which I think is really great.
Yeah, me too.
Thanks for pointing that out. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
Thanks, Dr. Button. Good evening. Just two items for your consideration from my office tonight. One, we have a Verizon lease agreement for your consideration that I'll touch upon a little bit more in a moment. Then we also have some additional private-duty nursing agreements, similar to what we approved back at the July meeting. Just able to find some more people to provide those valuable required services as we open a new school year. So the Verizon agreement stemmed from ongoing service issues here at the high school. If you've not been connected to the Wi-Fi, you've probably determined at some point in this building that you weren't able to have service. It's not just Verizon, it's Sprint and other providers as well. So we reached out through our tech team to, to the company to see if there could be some kind of solution to the problem. And over the course of many months, this, this started really early in the spring, we identified a area in the north parking lot where we're able to mount like a small little antenna. It's not like, like a tower that you'd see out and about. It's not even one of the rooftop ones that requires a certain amount of square footage. It's literally just a mounted little bracketed piece. So we, we took a look at that. We're hopeful that it'll address some of the concerns. It was strategically placed out there, because that's just out by the stadium. That's where you have a lot of population density and people utilizing their phones. We did perform a secret analysis to ensure that there was no adverse environmental impact. It was determined to be a type-two negative declaration, so no, no impact and no action moving forward. And because this does aid Verizon's product, it improves their network, they are offering us $2,400 on an annual basis to, to utilize that pole space. We don't anticipate it'll be any kind of administrative burden to, to manage. They'll be able to come in and maintain it if there's any issues, anything like that. And again, we're hopeful that it'll provide us better service here at this building. We were able to, through a smaller device, improve service at district office. And we're also looking at a solution at Indian Landing Elementary School, because they've had some intermittent issues as well. But this building, being so large and so many people, it really required just a little bit of, of a stronger frequency. That's it for me tonight. Any questions on the private-duty nursing agreements or the Verizon mini-tower lease?
Board members, questions?
I appreciate you talking about the size, because I meant to email about maybe showing a picture, because I first envisioned like something, something big, and it's really not.
In the Exhibit 8 to the contract, I believe it's on board docs, there's a visual representation of what it looks like. And if you were standing on the ground, you wouldn't even pay attention to what it is. It kind of just looks like
Looks like a light, almost.
Yep. It looks like just a little, it's right on the light pole. You'd hardly notice it. Small enough that it's not going to help Penfield that large, the community, but it's hopefully powerful enough to improve some of the reception in this building.
Great. Thank you. All right.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you.
So that brings us to our, our public comment period. Just please note, the instructions to participate are, are updated, because we now have Kathleen's address, email address. So if you want to sign up, also remember that the board will not be responding to comments during this session. Concerns raised will be forwarded on to appropriate parties. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. And also, please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. And we have, what's in here? Couple of speakers tonight. Our first speaker is Mr. Leonardo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carmen Leonardo, and I reside at 1915 Penfield Road. I represent Penfield United for Education Excellence. I am a product of an immigrant family. Like many Americans, and probably like a few of you, who came to this country escaping an oppressive way of life, a totalitarian regime, fascist, fascist or socialist most commonly, that ruled by force and caused only widespread economic and intellectual poverty that removed opportunity but for a few. These immigrant families came, and they all had one thing in common, and that was hope. They came here because America promised equality, justice, dignity, inclusion, and unity through its diversity of people, our melting pot, and opportunity for everyone. Their hopes came to fruition with themselves and in the generations they've left behind. They succeeded by honoring family, creating and taking advantage of opportunities. They succeeded by their own industry and hard work, and by recognizing the value of education for their children. But in our schools, we associate these values, these cultural and societal aspirations, with a clenched fist of oppression and force. These values are just the opposite of what the clenched fist represents. The image I passed out is displayed on classroom doors here at Penfield High School. An administrator told me this image was approved by the school board. Of all of the images that positively depict diversity, equity, and inclusion, the district has chosen the clenched fist. has chosen the clenched fist. This symbol, the exact clenched fist that's used in this illustration, has always and continues to be associated with militancy, socialist, communist, and subversive movements here and globally. What this socializes students to believe is that these cultural and societal aspirations are obtained by force and disruption. And clearly, just the opposite is true. This symbol on the classroom door represents a false narrative. Our ancestors left oppressive societies. They left the clenched fist of force and oppression because the values we purport to hold dear were not available to them, period. So please stop using the symbol. Should audit all of the symbols on display in our schools and make certain that they truly represent equality, justice, dignity, inclusion, unity, and opportunity. Thank you. And one final note, if you could please speak into your microphones because we can't hear anything that you say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dana Mar, 1690 Cultural Road. We've been hearing a great deal about social emotional learning and restorative practices being implemented into the classroom and curriculum and schedule. A student who recently heard there will be daily 30-minute SCL sessions starting this fall, shared this quote, "If kids feel uncomfortable or unsafe about talking about things, or if they have social anxiety, then why do they have to tell the whole class things about themselves? A kid who has anxiety or has trouble with this could feel more anxious and worried by talking in a group." While it is recognized that there could be benefits to students engaging in conversations about themselves with one another, there are also risks that are important considerations as SCL sessions are facilitated. We never know what a child may have experienced, what if a child had been bullied by another child in the same group and the facilitator has no prior knowledge of this having happened and now this child is being asked to share things in front of this group? This could be a very scary proposition for this child, even as simple and small a task as it may seem. All this possible safe, all the possible safety mechanisms put in place for these groups may not make the child feel any safer or preserve their actual emotional safety. While I understand many of the administration team have, are trained in trauma-informed practices, which is vitally important in the case of a devastating event, I would advocate that teachers who are facilitating these groups on a daily basis have a solid everyday working knowledge of what a trauma response might look like and how to best respond and support students. While I recognize that these groups are intended to gently and gradually get kids engaged into conversation and better understand one another, even the simplest of situations could have unanticipated impact. It is also vital that re-traumatization be avoided as best as possible. I also raise concern to healthy boundaries. We are teaching these kids at a very early age to trust others with information about themselves, putting themselves into a potentially vulnerable position with peers and even teachers. When they are being taught to such extent that these sessions are a safe space to talk about things and building trust, at what point is too much trust established and at what point does that trust put them at risk of harm from others? While we hope that increased understanding would equal more kindness, it unfortunately does not always have that outcome. As I shared at the last board meeting, boundaries are of key importance, it is vital that students are able to establish their own healthy boundaries, and it is equally important that they are able to respect others' boundaries. What happens when a child puts themselves out, they're sharing something in one of these groups, and despite all those guidelines that have been established, a peer uses information that was learned in that group to cause emotional harm to another child? These groups sound very similar to what we might see facilitated by clinicians such as therapists or social workers. While there are some excellent teachers in Penfield, how do we ensure that students have the appropriate support when teachers who do not have the clinical background are responsible to facilitate these groups? Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Mr. Lo Tempio?
You got it.
All right, good. Yay, that's not my strength.
Hello, my name is Michael Tempio. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. Me and my wife are extremely concerned about the Penfield School District's disconcern for our parents and their values. Many have no idea what the agenda that's taking place, even many of you may not even know and are being deceived into believing it's a, the cause is just. But we feel that the SCL program, me and others, that it has a negative effect on our children's ability to make their own judgments on basic moral issues. I personally feel, since God was taken out of school in 1962, our children has been on a downward spiral. Now sin is being openly taught in our schools and being disguised as acceptance and love. By now, you probably figured out I am indeed a Christian. I follow the Bible and the Word of God, not man. God is love, tolerance, and acceptance. Also, we love everyone equally and we don't cast condemnation on anyone. But we're also taught to tell the truth and what is ungodly. Now it comes to this, this is the reason why I'm here. I'm very upset about this. This is a, this is a form that we got today for my fourth grader kindergarten, or not kindergarten, it's cribner, for art, okay? This is a teacher.
Please don't, um...
Okay, sorry, did not know that.
Sorry, no names.
Take that off.
Thank you.
It says, "Student's preferred name above." Student's full name given, student's preferred name, if different, pronouns. Then it proceeds to say, "Adult," the name, not parent, pronouns, relationship to student, not parent. Then it's asking, "What do I feel comfortable about telling about hobbies and other things about my child?" I don't understand what this has to do with art, okay? I'm visibly upset. Art class, I feel it's inappropriate, it's offensive, and it should not be a gender assignment, male or female, and honestly, that's a stretch, it's art. At the bottom, it states it's diverse, inclusive, accepting, welcoming, safe environment for everyone. That is key words, key words for LGBTQ and for that matter, Black Lives Matter movement. "The rainbow which may, I see all over Scrivener School and the Penfield District implies acceptance of homosexuality lifestyle." I'm not sure who's aware of this, Thomas Putnam, I'm not sure if you condone this. In the closing, I feel that the SCL agenda is hidden agenda saying it's about your child's emotional state, acceptance, and well-being, but applies that all children have to accept the lifestyle alternative to my Christian values, one that promotes sin, that is not a problem in the SCL curriculum. And what actually should be our children's safe place is turned into the indoctrination of young minds. Thank you guys and God bless you.
Thank you. Okay. We, uh, where are we?
6A.
6A, we're on 6A. We have some appointments, I'm going to read this. "Be it resolved that the Board of Education appoints Kathleen Astrow as Records Assess Officer and Records Retention and Disposition Officer effective August 31, 2022, and for the remainder of the 22-23 school year. Be it resolved that the Board authorizes the establishment of a petty cash fund at Indian Landing Elementary in the amount of $75 with Leslia Bill..." Oh, there's another one. "Bill Zach," how do you say that? No, you don't know. "Blize Zach" as the designated custodian effective September 6, 2022, for the remainder of the 22-23 school year. Be it also resolved that Deborah Cote and Alyssa Waller are appointed as attendance keepers at Penfield High School effective September 6, 2022, and for the remainder of the 22-23 school year pursuant to 8 NYCRR Section 104.1. May I have a motion, please, and a second that we approve the above-mentioned appointments?
So.
So moved by Mark.
Second.
Second by Catherine. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. So we have our facilities, Verizon lease, do I have to read all this? What do I have to read here? All of it? I don't have to read all of it, okay. So we're going to approve the Verizon lease agreement as Dan has presented. I'm moving to the bottom, right? "Section, will be it resolved that the Board hereby finds the premises proposed to be leased to Verizon is not needed for school purpose at this time due in part to the fair market rental that will be received by the district, and that the leasing of the space to the premise is in the best interest of the district. The Board also finds and concludes that the action proposed as part of the installation, operation, and maintenance of communications equipment as well as ancillary space for the installation, operation, and maintenance of wires, cables, and conduits is a type-two action under seeker and requiring no further action. The lease of the premise for a purpose of installation, operation, and maintenance of communications equipment together with ancillary space, operation, and maintenance is hereby approved and the superintendent is authorized to execute a lease and related documents on behalf of the district and this resolution shall take effect immediately." Can we have a motion, please, and a second? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Emily and a second by Kristen. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. So we will then approve the private nurse contracts as Dan mentioned. We'll have a motion, please, and a second to approve the independent contract agreement with Sue Robbins, Tara Conlee, and Vasne Green, ooh, and another one, Nina Figgins, for the performance of private duty nursing services for medically fragile students effective September 6, 2022 through June 30, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kristen, second by Catherine. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Whereas the Board has reviewed the terms of an agreement and general release with a tenured employee in executive session, be it resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board approves of an agreement and general release with a tenured employee and authorizes the superintendent of schools or his designee to take the necessary steps to implement the agreement. May I have a motion, please, in a second?
So moved.
Second.
So moved Emily, second by Mark. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. And we have one, this is a second read for this policy, yes?
Yeah, so this is a second read for the meal charging and prohibition against meal shaming. We talked about this at the first read, it's really some changes in our procedure. A question came up by Ms. Harley Board Member around the information on what we share with graduating seniors about a refund from the money that's on there, maybe being a little bit more clear with that. So my hope is that the Board will approve the policy as it is and then move it to Policy Committee to take a look at that portion of it, but it would be helpful to approve this as a school year starts based on the original changes we talked about last week, but don't want to lose sight of the comment from our last meeting and again, just move it to Policy Committee for further review.
You okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So is there any other questions on that? We didn't get any other comment on that?
No other comment.
Okay. So Board members may have a motion and a second, please, to approve Policy 5661 as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Catherine, second by Emily. All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Thank you. All right. Oh, we've had a, we've had a meeting. Mark, have you been to a meeting? Monroe County School Board meeting?
There was a meeting.
Steering Committee, did you go?
Unfortunately, I was traveling.
Were you away? Okay, no, I wasn't sure.
But I can, I can tell you...
We don't usually have many of these in the summer. We don't usually have many in the summer, I was like, oh, do we have them?
So this, it's the Steering Committee of the Monroe County School Board Association. It was, we have the new Executive Director, Amy Thomas, who's just started her term, this was her first Steering Committee meeting, and you know, a number of things were on the agenda where they reviewed her goals as Executive Director, as well as the Monroe County School Board Association's goals for this year. And then there was a new Monroe County School Board Association website, although I saw that that was on the last meeting, and then the Trader Report. And just to, you know, remind everybody, this is where all the school boards get together and, you know, they have a, where they have a common vision, work together to advance all the districts together.
Thank you. If you guys haven't checked out the new website, it's kind of cool and I think it's going to be better because I don't feel like I'm getting like 100 emails, you know, so...
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you get, because I think there's a section like for, right, for everybody?
That's great.
I don't know, I think it's cool. But then I have to remember to go, but...
Right.
It's like, I didn't get my email, right? So there's that sort of, yeah. Okay, so District Committees, there was a Code of Conduct Committee on the 25th. Oh, that was the first one, right? Okay. So did you...
I wasn't able to attend.
Were you, did you, were you able to attend, Nicole? Would you like to speak a little bit about the meeting? Or we can also defer to, we do this a lot.
We'll defer to Tasha.
We do this a lot, we do this to Tom, too, we defer.
I'll do it next time. We held our first meeting. It was an opportunity for everyone that's a part of the committee to just get to know one another. We talked a little bit about the timeline for the development of the Code of Conduct and we are going to bring everyone together for an in-person meeting, but the first meeting was held virtually. I think it was a nice opportunity to just, like a meet and greet virtually, but the work that we're planning will involve a review of the Code of Conduct and we left that meeting and shared as a follow-up the Code of Conduct and an opportunity to share and offer some questions in preparation for the planning of our next meeting, which will be held in person. So.
Wonderful, thank you.
Nicole, was there anything that you'd like to offer? No, that's, that's good.
So I have a question on this, because I know we did a lot of work on this, so the, so the version they're starting with is the one we have now, not like...
Yes.
Like the one that we started working on and changing.
So the version we're working off is our current version. The Policy Committee did review and prior to COVID and made some updates, changes, thoughts, but as we look at, we, part of this and the timeline that Mrs. Potter shared at the last board meeting was the timeline includes time to look at other Code of Conducts from our area, from the state, and nationally, and that would be an opportunity to also share the feedback and the, and the suggestions that the Policy Committee had, so it'll get sort of folded into that as well.
Got it.
Yep.
Cool, thank you.
It's finally underway.
Yay! Very excited about that.
It's a, it's a large group and, and I would say, you know, I anticipate quite a lot of deep conversations around it because people are coming at from all different lenses. And then, as we shared, both when Mrs. Potter presented and in this committee meeting, there'll be multiple times for, you know, further community input with the Code of Conduct. So just as a reminder, in order in New York State to approve a Code of Conduct, the Board does have to approve it, but it has to have a public hearing first off and get feedback and we talked about it, as you've already shared, Mrs. Potter, the sort of community meeting to share where we're at, too. So even if you're not on the committee, the feedback will be important from all stakeholders as we go through.
Great, thank you. And then we had a Facilities Committee meeting, but I think we really hashed that.
Yeah, we covered that.
This was pretty much, the whole presentation was kind of what we, what we reviewed, so I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, but I think, I think we sort of reviewed that. Unfinished business, Mark and I actually wanted, or you can bring up, we were talking about the, remind me.
So as part of the annual convention, and actually it's separate this year, but there's an annual business meeting where resolutions that are put forth by school boards around the state are reviewed and debated and voted upon, and those resolutions, if they're approved, are then turned into essentially the platform for the New York State School Board Association to work on our behalf in support of those resolutions. The business meeting is where we vote on it, every district has an opportunity to have a representative and we need to select our representative. And so I've done it many times, but at the same time, we have other people and want to make sure that, that there, other people have an opportunity...
there was like this little place where you had to stay because you didn't have your voting thing?
That might be.
Right, because it's, I think it has to be an open-
I know that, I've sat and read through the resolutions before, before they were voted upon, but I wasn't at a meeting to do it.
No, they share the resolutions out. The Board gets to see them.
But I think your point is if somebody wants to actually go.
To see the debate and the vote.
To see it, I think anybody could just-
Or learn from an expert. I was just thinking if a board member wanted to attend with you, it would learn.
Yeah, to attend and hop on. Yeah, so we should make sure that we get, we figure that out, like how that works and-
Have we decided that Mark is going to be the voting delegate?
Yes, but we're going to, we're going to ask Kathleen to figure out who, who else can attend? Can we all like go and view it, even though we have one voter? I don't know the answer to that from a partial standpoint.
So I don't want to make more, because I asked a question, but for Kathleen taking notes, Mark is the designee.
Yes.
And we can- There's only one voting delegate.
Right, yeah.
And we can choose an alternate because, of course, in the physical sense, if someone had to leave the room, you could have an alternate come in to be, to participate while you were out of the room.
Okay.
But there used to be a viewing section in the room. The times that I came-
I mean, I was, when I was in there, I was-
I don't know, I just remember that because I didn't know, it was strange, but, because if you didn't have a-
It ain't on mine this year, though.
Right, so yeah, I don't know how that works then, yeah.
We'll find out.
We'll figure it out, okay.
But Mark is the designee.
But just so you know, you have to go, raise your paddle and whatever. Speaking of that, it is the 12th, I think, is the last day, their deadline for the early bird Monroe County School Board.
I thought you were talking about-
Or, yes, I'm sorry.
New York State.
New York State, I misspoke, you're right. It's the 12th, right, is the deadline?
That's correct.
For the voting delegate.
Oh, for the voting delegate, but the 12th is the early bird deadline, I think, too, for-
For the convention.
For the convention registration.
Is the convention registration?
It's soon. It's soon, so if you're thinking of going, please let Kathleen know because it's, it's cheaper if we do that, if we sign up.
Anyone who's ready to go?
I think-
I think Mark.
Mark's, I think I'm going to go. No, 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 I think Kristen's going to go. Yeah.
So Kristen, Mark, and Lisa?
Yep.
I'm going to just look at them.
Yeah. So if anyone else is interested, yeah, that's okay.
And remember, it's in Syracuse.
It's in Syracuse.
Which is a lot better than New York City.
It's easier to get to. It's not as fun, but-
Yeah, it's easier to get to, it's not as much of a hassle, and it's certainly a lot less expensive for-
I will go all three, I will, I'll just go Thursday, or Friday to Saturday. I'll miss one day of work.
Okay, great. So if anybody changes their mind, please email.
I'm still, yeah.
Kathleen, yeah.
So far, we have three, though, right?
Yes.
And maybe Tom, he's checking his schedule.
Checking the family calendar.
So it's Dan, Dan's checking his schedule.
You see me every day, so.
Yeah.
But definitely, we have the three board members.
Okay, beautiful.
It's a good representation if nobody else can go, so at least there's that.
That's good, right. All right, I don't know where we are now. I think that was all unfinished business. Is there any new business?
Mm-mm.
All right. So seeing no new business, I will ask for a motion. I'm going to actually get a vote this time. And a second, then we adjourn the meeting at 8:12 PM.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Awesome, meeting adjourned. Thanks so much, everyone. Thank you for your time.